July 7, 2020 council meeting to order at 7:26 PM. Forgive the tardy beginning. Executive session ran a little longer than was expected, which is why I would like to in the future put these executive sessions on the back end of our meetings. So having called the meeting to order, I'd like to turn it over to the mayor for the flag saluting indication.
Okay, take your couple of seconds to think about the people that are dying from the first phase of the virus that's coming back. Okay, who's got the flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag. The United States of America.
To the republic.
Public for which it stands.
One, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, Andrew for the roll call.
Sorry. Council President Papaleo.
Present.
Councilman Kyle Willis.
Present.
Councilwoman Lee Daley.
Present.
Councilman Nick Waters.
Present.
Present twice. Alright, Councilwoman Melinda Isaac.
Present.
Councilman Jason McWigan.
Here, here.
Councilman Robert Ruskowski. Councilman Robert Ruskowski. Rogo.
Pretty sure he's on.
Yeah, he was at least. Yeah, there he is.
I'm here.
Mayor Bob Fry.
Here.
Alex.
Present.
And I'm present.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Borough Manager. Moving on to audience participation. Do we have any emails or commentary from residents?
Joe has always announced that we met an executive session.
Oh, forgive me, forgive me. We did meet in an executive session prior to this meeting. It did run a little longer than was expected and then subsequently this meeting was consequently begun a half hour after the scheduled time. That said, moving on to audience participation.
So we did not get any formal letters on audience participation. That being said, I think one thing that was brought up to my attention that I would like to address without reading word for word into the record, just because I don't think it was intended this way, is that, but it was by a resident. The library director allows some of our residents to use the wifi that the library has from sitting outside of the building. And so she would like to acquire tables and chairs to do that. Something she brought to my attention, I think it was yesterday. So she'd like to get some tables and chairs so people can sit outside and use wifi, people who don't have access to it at home.
I spoke to Jen, the director, yesterday. And I was going to be discussing that live report as well. I'd like to discuss, what do you think guys about that?
Okay, alright, very good. Moving on to the.
Hey Joe, just a suggestion.
Yep.
I don't even know, there we go. We have all those tables that we were using for seniors. Probably if you want to get them to her as early as tomorrow, you could bring them to her because the seniors haven't been meeting in Borough Hall anyway.
That's true. That's true. Does anybody object to that? Do you guys feel like we need the need to get something a little bit more aesthetically pleasing? I don't know what, they are pretty ugly without the table covers on. I mean, I'm game with that. It serves the purpose.
And we have a concern with them being ugly. I think as Jason was saying, we could get it there now if we want it there now and then we can consider.
Yeah.
Like if we are concerned about that, do we have chairs? Do we know?
Yeah, that room's full of chairs too. And it's not being used.
True.
Oh, deep as picnic tables, Joe.
What's that?
Deeper there, picnic tables.
I know, I know. That's what I was thinking, but I mean, for the sake of right now, I don't even think we, we don't need a vote of council for that, Kyle, correct? We can just direct them in that, we can just do it.
I hope you're asking Alex.
I'm sorry, Alex, forgive me. That's right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. Authorize the expenditure.
Say again?
If you're gonna do an expenditure of new tables, just do a motion to authorize that expenditure.
Alright, well, I guess we could revisit that. Mindy, you can bring a formal report with whatever you want to pick out and we'll talk about it. But for now, we can move the resources we have over there for, you know, for use, for proper use. Did you, nobody objects to that, correct? No, alright. Moving on to the engineer's report.
Thanks, I think everybody has a copy of my report. Just a couple of things. I wanted just to let everybody know that the road program, the list of streets, we still haven't decided what we're doing with that. And I will tell you that the cost of paving has gone up $10 a ton. If we're going to do something, I would suggest we, we do it sooner than later. But as well, if we're going to wait till next month or so, we probably ought to revisit the cost estimate. I never really want to do that until we absolutely need it to. I was asked to get a price to do the crosswalks. And I got a proposal from Action Seal Coat, who's done quite a bit of work in different municipalities we represent. And they want $750 to do the continental on the, would be three crosswalks in the intersection of Elmwood and, and Garfield. Form craft out tomorrow, I'll send over the approved municipal security agreement. You'll have that, so you can put that into your, your agreement. And we haven't seen anything formally from, from any of the other applicants. Safe Store is, is trying to get their sanitary store module together. They had a bit of an issue that they sent things to the Muckin' up Hades Authority. And they're actually in the Darby Joint Authority watershed. So that had to be corrected. So hopefully we'll be seeing that shortly. Run properties, from what I understand, there's been a review of the MPDES. There's some comments, so hopefully we'll have that resolved before the fall. Because we, we had that soccer field that we'd actually like to be, have the school use this year. It was all wet last year. That's about all I have for the time being, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions, anyone? No? Alright, so we'll move on to public finance and administration. I'd like to discuss plans for implementation for the parking permit program in Fallcroft. Tomorrow, I will have to make a follow-up phone call with the Borough Manager in Doylestown. A couple of us are going to take a trip up to Doylestown. It's a borough in, I believe Bucks County comparable in size to Fallcroft that has a pretty organized, what they call parking management operation. And I want to study it. I want to see how it works, I want to understand it. A lot of what they do won't translate to Fallcroft. They have meter parking, which is not something that we have. However, we, with the parking permit plan, we are going to have to facilitate a means for guests who are going to park overnight any day of the week to be able to register their vehicles for whatever nominal fee we choose. And the Borough Manager in Doylestown explained to me that there is an app. So rather than having to issue residents guest passes, their guests can sign on to an app or use an app, pay their, their, whatever it is, five hours, whatever it is for the night. I don't know if we have differentials on the weekend, I don't know what we're going to do, that's all yet to be determined. But I just want to let you know that we are, we're studying what other communities are doing. I haven't really been able to locate a community of our size that has successfully dealt with their parking problems. It's a really urban environment down here in the village. You can probably hear my neighbor's music playing in the background. So you can tell how close, how closely we live together. So we also face some different challenges than other communities that might also be of our same population. So I just wanted to, you know, make you aware that we are moving into the, the planning phase of how this is going to roll out. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to add to that discussion point?
So I believe our intention is to make a separate ad hoc committee to this with public meetings so that people can come and voice concerns. Is that still the case, Joe?
I mean, I would, I would be open to it, sure. When you say ad hoc committee, do you mean like a citizen committee or a?
Some of us would sit on it as well, but as a matter of allowing us to have separate public meetings for people to voice concerns and or ideas and get some citizens on it. And do it in a way that it's very, you know, public facing.
Right. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm open to that. So we, I think we did discuss that I would have Councilman Waters and you on that committee with me. Are there any other council members who would express an interest in participating in, in that? I mean, it is going to involve some traveling to other municipalities. We're going to be studying how other people do it. But am I allowed, I don't think I'm allowed to have a committee larger than three, am I? Alex.
Sorry, I was on mute. No, anything larger than four, or yeah, three trips, the, the public meeting requirement of a corner.
Okay.
Joe, did you talk to the parents about the parking? They've had parking for years over there.
I haven't, I don't know how they, I know that. Hold on a second. Give me a moment, hang on a moment. Now you see why I hate Zoom meetings. Sorry about that. So to answer your question, I have spoken to a couple of people in Land's End, not recently. But that's another one that we should probably put on the list and I'm going to write that down now. I have plenty of people I can talk to there. And I will certainly for that as well. So Alex, to get back to something that you said, so it would trip up the quorum requirement. Would our, our ad hoc parking committee meetings still be public even if it's just the three of us attending?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, if you have four on the. Technically you could vote, which means technically it's a public meeting, there has to be duly advertised according to your annual schedule. But, you know, a three-person committee member meeting is well open to the public if you, you know, you can advertise as a special meeting. You can just put an announcement on your website, but it doesn't have those strict advertising and voting requirements associated with it.
I got you, okay. Can I do it now?
Absolutely.
Okay, alright, so then I will.
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, so then I will form an ad hoc committee regarding the, the parking management project or the parking permit program that Fallcroft is embarking on. And that will consist of myself, Councilman Waters, and, and Councilman Willis. Moving on to discussing repairing and paving of shared driveways in Fallcroft. So that particular item is directly related to the success of the first. So the, the, the implementation of the parking permit program, I project if done correctly, has the potential to generate up to $390,000 a year in revenue. That would satisfy any loans we took out that would be able to service the debt on any loans that we took out for the, the driveway repair project. And that's, that's kind of where we're at. Does anybody have anything to add? No?
Joe, yeah, I got just, just one thing that when, when you guys are building this ordinance, I think 390 is actually more than enough to do it. But I think, opposite of my original position, I think that money should be earmarked to be used exclusively for driveways. Because I think you may actually have extra money. And if I'm the guy saying that, you know, I don't, I don't have driveways, why should I pay them? That money then shouldn't turn around and be used for anything else other than the folks that have paid into it. So I, I think that, I mean, if Alex, when he's drafting the ordinance, could just make it kind of airtight, that that money's certainly earmarked for those projects.
And it would be for.
I don't want to put windows up, Joe, like to.
Yeah.
But you know what I mean, just to show that our intent is that our, that money will be used to folks who actually paid into it.
I, I agree. And I would want to add, if we decide to have any sort of parking enforcement, parking management employees or anybody who does that work exclusively, that the, the revenues raised would be helped to pay for that, for that as well. And, you know, and anything in excess of that would go to the debt servicing of the loan for the driveways. There was some suggestion or some talk of us, you know, allowing the police to, to, to enforce the, the permit rules. And I just, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure I was sold on that, that concept. Number one, our police have a wonderful reputation with our neighbors. Nobody likes the guy who writes parking tickets. Right? So I don't really know that I would want our police to be tangled up with, you know, that particular sort of thing. Also, the revenues generated from violations, which will, residents will be given far, plenty of warning and what they, what they have to do to be compliant with the, with the, you know, with the ordinance. It, the revenues that are generated from any violations, they would take a backseat to real police business. In other words, if a cop is patrolling and looking and there's a call and they have to leave for three hours, the proper enforcement of that ordinance is, is, is not going to be, it's, it's, they're not going to be able to do it. So that, I mean, that, that's sort of my angle and posturing on it. I mean, I'm open to suggestions, but, and it would also be a really weird shift from midnight to seven or eight in the morning or whatever it is. So that, I mean, there's that as well. But that's kind of where my mind is now, nothing is definite, but I just wanted to share that with everyone. There is another item that is not on the agenda that, that I expected to see. Fireworks. Let's talk about fireworks. Who's first?
Who's for?
I'm tired of hearing them all hours of the night, every day of the week. And I think that our residents have a reasonable expectation to expect to have a right to some element of peace in the evening hours before they have to go to bed for work. And that, in addition to the, the dangers of lighting these things off close to structures is, is, is an issue for me too. We are currently not even in compliance with state law in terms of some of the things I've seen in the neighborhood. I mean, kids who shouldn't even have them, blowing things up in the middle of the street. I mean, like, come on. So I've got, I, I, I love the opinion that they should be, there should be an ordinance that prohibits their use with the exception of certain, maybe holidays that are written into the ordinance where we will relax it and during those holidays, they could be used if they're, if they're using.
Can we overstep the state with that, Joe?
I, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, the municipality does reserve the right to have stricter laws than the state.
Right, so yeah, the fireworks act was completely repealed in 2017 and rewritten. It does give the municipalities, i.e. the borough here, the ability to go stricter than the requirements from the state. But there's also, I would argue incredibly strict standards set in the ordinance at you by the state that also must be adhered to. But, right, the more strict would be as far as permitting, time of use, days of use. Those are kind of things that would be considered more restrictive than the statute, but you are allowed to incorporate into your ordinance. There's already common sense prohibitions that, like you said, Joe, that aren't being followed. Like you can't fire off fireworks if you're, you can't purchase them if you're under the age of 18. You shouldn't be firing them off if you're under the age of 18. You can't be firing them inside occupied structures. You can't fire them within 150 feet of an occupied structure, across highways and cars, and intoxicated and so forth. So there's a bunch of already common sense prohibitions in there. But again, you can go stricter as far as use and timing if you'd like to.
Okay. Alright, and. Alright, so how, what, where does everybody fare on this?
The one thing I think with the fireworks, especially due to safety. What if we were able to allow people to go in the field behind the firehouse, which is big enough, where they can light them off? So then it allows for people to see them, number one, and number two, it's for safety. Because I was thinking about that, I was sitting, I haven't heard too many in my neighborhood until recently. And I'm sitting at my couch at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. And my husband's trying to sleep. And I'm like, whoa, what's going on? And when I think it's going to be a quiet night, all of a sudden 11 o'clock at night, I'm hearing them. I'm like, that's way too late. We need to have some kind of curfew with that, I think.
I agree with everything Mindy just said with one exception. Please don't use the field behind the firehouse, it's going to be a construction site in a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Jason.
No, but, but maybe even behind Borough Hall or somewhere that's open like that. Our field, but I agree Montgomery, well, maybe not Montgomery Park, there's a lot of kids, but, but you're right, some sort of designated area. Look, I, they are just, it's too much. They're not, they're, they're doing them at 2 o'clock in the morning and that's, that's just beyond the pale. So I'm for whatever stops that.
So I'd say, what should be the cutoff time? Well, you know what, let's, let's, let me roll it back. What should be the dates where we will allow it? So things like 4th of July?
Memorial Day, Labor Day.
I agree, the main holidays, if they want to end the weekends, like on a Saturday night, Friday night or Saturday night. But the Sunday nights and all that, I think is a little, Sunday night and through the week, Monday, Sunday through Thursday night, it's not good. Because.
New Year's Eve.
And all that kind of stuff, so.
Say to echo, yeah, New Year's Eve and the three holidays that the mayor described are generally the only days that are allowed under most ordinances in the state. And other than, it might be summer, but, but any other day is usually just prohibited outright.
I would only suggest June.
I'd be fine with that. We'll do June.
I would suggest stricter, I, I would like to see it enforced more on St. Patrick's Day because of the use of alcohol.
Fair enough. Alright, so we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, so five days out of the year.
Can Chief Bear weigh in on this? Because my issue, listen, I, they're astronomical, my dogs have heart attacks. But how easy is it is, is it to actually enforce this? Like I'll call that the neighbor across the street is blowing up M80s and by the time the cops get here, they're not blowing up M80s anymore. So how, Chief Bear, can you weigh in as how this easily or not easily enforceable? That's my issue.
It's a good question. Chief.
Well, the chief's getting situated, I'll jump in there too, to say that most ordinances do allow, of course, the state, the Pennsylvania State Police have enforcement rights obviously under the fireworks act. So they're allowed to confiscate and cite and shut down any kind of firework use. Your local police would also be allowed, and then most ordinances also authorize essentially any member of the county fire department or fire company as well to have that power.
Am I on? Yes, Chief, we got you.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Alex on that. The thing is, as far as enforceable, it's going to be, if we don't, if you have an M80 or a quarter stick of dynamite going off or whatever, and we don't see it, that's going to come back, if you want to have someone who calls and writes out a statement, then basically we can go off that statement on information received, but we're not going to get any kind of people that want to come forward possibly and go to court on this. As far as anybody else that put off like the mortars and that type of stuff, if they have one mortar, they usually have a lot more and that's when we can get there and probably get there in time. And again, it's going to be from the residents themselves most of the time, as far as calling on this. If it's annoying to them and they know there's going to be consequences, the, the, your citizens possibly could help us out with that. Other than that, we're just rolling up on it as it's going on, unless we see it.
I mean, it, it does also give us the, the opportunity to levy fines against people who, who are caught, correct? Which we don't have.
Right, we, yeah, if we, yeah, we don't have that now. I mean, yeah, we could do that if we have a better ordinance or whatever else. But again, it's, you know, we have to catch them in the act or have some kind of witness that's going to give us a statement on such of what happened or what is transpiring, that we can go forward and they're going to have to testify in court. I don't know how we're going to, I mean, they, they may, who knows? Somebody may get that upset about it. Because it is actually a lot, and I'm getting a lot of officers on night work saying that it's a lot. And that's why I brought it to the attention to Joe, Andrew and Kyle, is, you know, this is kind of like an issue that we may want to get ahead of. But again, you know, whatever you want to have it as far as, even if it's on certain holidays, it's allowed or you're allowing certain time restraints. And having all the other things that Alex said about alcohol and common sense stuff that we can have in there as well.
Okay.
I'd like to add, I'm sorry, Joe, one more thing to add on that too. There's also layers to the ordinances as well. So there is a difference written in between just the average consumer buying a few fireworks and setting off two or three, you know, for fun and display versus a person that has stockpiled and accumulated significant amount of fireworks and that intends to put on their own private show, so to speak. So in that latter scenario, your ordinance is going to require that that person goes to the borough and fills out an application and pays a permit fee for a display of fireworks as well. That'll make it easier to check, you know, and track the bigger users of fireworks as well.
Okay, and, and. Sorry. To, to get back to Lee's point, it, I mean, it is, I think it's quite possible that we won't, we won't catch everybody. You know, but now there's an ordinance on the books that if a cop drives by someone, he has, he has an obligation to, to stop it. So hearing about somebody paying a hefty fine for violating this is a deterrent. And so we, we don't, we don't prohibit things legally or choose not to prohibit them just because we're afraid we can't enforce them. I mean, if, I mean, you know what I mean? Lee?
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to be clear that, that it's a difficult situation, knowing that the firehouse can also help out with that, I think would be very useful. And I agree, if someone gets a fine, it should settle down for a while. Because, you know, they'll be on concerned citizens in about four seconds complaining about that.
I don't think they'll have much support.
No, I don't either. And I wouldn't be surprised if we found out after studying the situation for a little longer that it's a lot of the same people over and over again doing this at night. I mean, I don't, you know, who knows? I mean, it's, so, Chief, do you have any objections to us pursuing something like this? Is it, is it an undue strain on the department?
No, I don't think it's a strain on the department. It's public inconvenience at some point. I mean, sometimes, yeah, for a celebration, you want to have that celebration or whatever else. But when it becomes a nuisance, we have to stop it.
Alright. Alright, so Alex, I'll get those dates or those holidays over to you. I guess we can work them up in the, in the, in the ordinance, we'll properly advertise it and we'll, we'll get it moving, if that's okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, and timeframe wise, we'll end up passing it in August.
Okay, perfect, works for me. Moving on to public works, let me turn this over to Councilman Willis.
Alright, so first item on the agenda for this section is discussing the property that's next to the farmhouse across the street from your building, the clock tower and the library. That's a nice green space that I kind of would like to utilize but preserve it as a green space. I have started to reach out to people like principal of the school. the school, see if we can turn this into something where like an outdoor classroom is a place where students and kids can go to.
Kyle, let me just interject for one more moment. Everybody on this, on the, on the meeting, if you could, um, please make use of your mute button. There's a lot of background noise and it's making it difficult for me to hear, for us to hear Kyle. I hear, I think I hear either a police radio or something in the background. Just if you could mute yourself when you're not, when you don't have the floor. Sounds better. All right, Kyle, I apologize. You go ahead.
All right. So utilize this as kind of an educational space, but also somewhat recreational space. It's a green where there's a little bit of nature preserved as it is now, but it's accessible to our residents and especially our, you know, youth population for going to it for classroom purposes. I know as a, personally, as a teacher who teaches biology in grade bands, I would absolutely love to have a place where I could take my students to go and teach them something like that. And I'm hoping that the school is interested. But I wanted to get you guys' input on something like that.
I love the idea. I think, um, I think it's a good use of the space. Just keep in mind that we will have to name it after Giles Cannon. Anything that we build there, um, will have to be, that's, it's in the D, that's gotta be, it's part of the deal.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns about that idea?
Nope. I absolutely love it. You know that.
All right. Um, the second item is a kind of an idea that crops out of the fact that we're recording the meetings now for the fact that they're online. Um, as we move towards the project of the new building, I don't know if this has already been taken into account, or it is something that would be considered later on. But acquiring the ability for us to record and/or live stream or broadcast our meetings, I'm of the opinion that the more publicly we are able to make these things, the better off we will be. Um, so if we can either do it for the building or plan for the new building, acquire for now, if we start having public meetings in person again, where we can either live stream or broadcast at least, or our meetings, I don't know where other people stand on this idea.
I actually think it's, it's a, it's a very good idea. I think, um, you know, everything out in the light of day is always better. Um, I certainly don't object to it. I'd, I'd be happy to move forward with something like that.
So I guess, Jason, this would be for you. Is this, was this a part of the consideration for the new building?
No, but I, I, I don't think, part of the consideration for the new building is a lot more up-to-date Wi-Fi, which is what you need. You're just looking at purchasing recording equipment.
Yeah. I did, I just, I don't know the equipment specifically, so I didn't know if that was something that was already planned for or would be discussed at a later date. But I think that if we can direct whoever we may need to start in getting us information about how we can do that, I would, that'd be something we may wanna do.
I think Stevie G's, you know, Stevie G's on this, and I believe he was consulted by, um, Deputy Chief Isner in the planning of this, um, as it related to the, the Wi-Fi. I don't know if you wanna step in or not.
Sure. Oh, go ahead, Steve. He did mention to me that they were looking, uh, for Wi-Fi setup, which, you know, I can, uh, very easily take care of. But as far as the cameras, um, I've seen some successful installations, Brookhaven is one of them, where they installed fixed cameras and basically connected to a, uh, digital video recorder, and they basically record the meetings and put them up on YouTube and all. And, uh, basically, it, it doesn't even require anybody to be there, just somebody to turn it on and turn it off when it's over. So yes, it can be done. Uh, the cabling and wiring would have to be put in while the building's obviously being constructed. But, uh, yeah, that, that would not be a big deal at all. You just have to purchase the cameras and the wiring, set it up.
It's not a big strain on the Wi-Fi, right? I know you have a network.
No. No, what you would do, you, you, you'd actually run cables, power over ethernet cables to the cameras. And this way, you're not using Wi-Fi at all. You'd connect it hardwired into your network so that you wouldn't be accessing the Wi-Fi using the video. It would all be hardwired. That's really the way to go.
So I don't know exactly what the process would be, but if this is something that council is setting for something, I guess we can ask Steve to get us the information we need about this system, this to be done as the building is built.
I would recommend that just when the electrician is running their cables, that they run the ethernet cables with it. You know, I mean, it's, it's an easy change order to do.
Cool.
Do we need to do anything in particular to ask Steve to get us the information you need for equipment as well? Or are we?
All I'd do is just authorize him to do the exploratory work.
All right. All right, Steve, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Once the exploratory work is done and we have specifics, then I imagine, Alex, you weighing on this, it would just, we could just do a change order for the, for the borough project.
Yeah, yeah. If you wanted to add it in, absolutely.
All right. Steve, um, were you?
Yes.
Okay. I'll be more than happy to work with the electrician and the borough, whatever, whatever needs to be done to accommodate this. Yes.
Okay, great. Sounds great. I think you have, uh,
I have one more item. I just wanna make, everyone is on board with that. I, I know I got a couple people's input. I just wanna make sure everyone is on board with this. Yeah. All right. Uh, the last one, which is the most positive note that I have, which is, I believe everyone should have received the email, uh, from the results of the consultation with APPI over our power bill. Um, that was a little while ago, but, uh, effectively, they found that we have a pretty sizable chunk of change that we can save by, um, negotiating contracts a little bit differently than we have. We are currently contracted with American Power and Gas, as I understand it from APPI. They are basically, they, they charge more, but basically they let you leave whenever you want. You don't sign a contract. And that's why they charge more. Um, and so how, wherever we are, we could end our agreement with, end our engagement with them with a simple email, effectively. We are not under any contract with them. It's a cancel whatever you would like to cancel agreements, as far as I understand it. And then they have suggested that, and have provided us with information to go with a company called Constellation, which they feel is not only the cheapest option, but also the best option for us. It would, uh, fix our rate for 60 months. So we would have a fixed budget item. We would know exactly kind of what the price per kilowatt hour would be, um, for the next five years, basically. Uh, it's historically low prices, and they suggest that we do that. Um, so it would save us effectively $40,000 a year, based on what we are spending right now.
Forty-seven.
Thank you.
No problem.
I'm all about that. Um, so, yeah, I guess whatever we gotta do to move that forward.
We would, I don't know whether we need anything rules to end our agreement or end our engagement with APG, Alex, but I know the next meeting, we would have to approve the contracts to start with Constellation.
Right. Yeah. You just motion to approve entering the contract, Constellation.
Do we need to do anything to end our engagement with APG? They could just turn us back over to PICO.
I don't think I've actually looked at those exit parameters, Kyle. So if you wanna send those to me, go ahead, and I'll take a look at them. But generally speaking, um, you don't have to do anything other than notify PICO that you just wanna take back, um, or just discontinue service with that third-party provider.
Right. I will send you the information that they sent over as to how we would go about it. I just didn't know if we needed a vote of council to end that. Thing is, there wasn't. Okay. Um, that is all of my items.
Right. Very good. Moving on to public safety. Councilmember Skowski.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we got you. You got a little bit of an echo, but we can hear you.
Okay, yeah. We wanted to discuss the body cams for the police. I know that Stevie G isn't on the meeting here. It's, um, not as easy as just getting the camera. Uh, these things are filmed, and you need to save the film and whatnot. And, uh, I think you need more electronics, like a server and whatnot. And I think Stevie could, uh, explain more of that.
Sure, chief. I attended the demonstration so far on two sets of body cameras that were that are the standard suppliers for police departments. One's Axon and one's WatchGuard. Differences of the two are, um, Axon has, um, cloud-based storage, um, and WatchGuard traditionally has a server-based storage within your own police department. So, uh, the majority of the cameras out there in Delaware County right now are WatchGuard. Um, they've been through two, going on three full installations of WatchGuard so far. Basically, it consists of a server that resides in your police station, um, with a reconfiguration for the operating system and the WatchGuard software. And then you have the storage drives, which actually store up to 60 or 90 days of video, however many days that the police department wants to keep. And then there's also a secure drive, um, for video captures that are to be set aside for future investigations or whatever. Um, also, there's a docking station that goes into the police station that they plug into the network. And when an officer comes on duty, he checks out a camera, logs onto the WatchGuard server, checks out a camera, and then that camera is assigned to him for shift. Um, the newer generation WatchGuard cameras that they have, they've only been out for about a month now, will last a full 12 hours. Uh, that officer will have that camera with him for 12 hours. And then when he comes back in off the screen, um, he detaches it from his vest or whatever, and then pops it into the, uh, bank charger. And, and at that point, the charger will begin to charge the camera back up again and also download the video to the server. Um, so like I say, I've done Parkside, Sharon Hill, and, um, working on Alden right now. And there's a lot of police departments looking at them right now. Um, Axon, I, I have not seen them live and in person. I was only on a demonstration. Um, both are comfortably, um, priced, but the only difference with Axon is they, they have cloud-based storage with, which can get pricey. So, um, majority of the police departments, um, have looked at the in-house storage, uh, on a separate server that resides within the police station. You know, so you have hands-on your stuff at all times. So, uh, that's what I know about it so far. Like I say, I have done two installations so far, pretty seamless stuff. Um, the WatchGuard people will connect remotely once I get the server set up, and they basically call the software, and then, um, I work with them to implement the cameras. All the training is online with online videos. And there's a representative that would come out for the initial startup and sort of, in case there's questions and problems with that. That's what I could tell you about it so far.
What about, uh, Chief Bear? What's his opinion about it?
As far as, um, the camera systems itself, bro?
Yes, Bill.
All right. So, yeah, I, I looked at Axon. I also looked at WatchGuard. I was in the same meeting that Stevie was. Stevie knows a lot more about this than I do. Um, but I've talked to some other departments, um, Radnor in particular as well. Um, and the only people I know that have Axon are Nether Providence and Morton. Um, but, uh, it seems to me the user-friendly type could be possibly the WatchGuard itself. I think in today's times, I think it is, you know, more times than not, I'm being told that it exonerates an officer that hurts them. And if it is a bad officer, we do wanna get rid of him anyway. Hopefully, we never have that issue. But in the same token is, in these days, I think it's better to protect ourselves. Hello?
All right. Okay. All right. Very good. Uh, sorry, my dog's acting up here. Um, I, so I, I guess we're gonna move forward with more, gathering more information on that, on that item?
Yeah, well, it's, it's just a matter of getting prices. Uh, I guess Billy, Chief Bear can do that. Um, you're gonna
I already have, chief, I already have prices. I already gave a price to, uh, council so they know about it. I gave what, what it would cost to outfit every car. Or I think I have to add a car to it because I forgot the K-9 vehicle, but I gave them a price for outfitting six cars and 19 officers. Um, I know it comes into effect where Stevie said, I think we can cut it down with like other departments and say like get four of them just for the part timers. Or however, if you have a big scene and all of a sudden you have six people out there and you don't have enough, enough body cams and something does happen, and it, it just so happens, it's the officer that didn't have a, um, camera, and you're saying, cause it's because of money. Um, I think that's a bigger lawsuit than what would really be to just to have it and have it in our, in our possession to use it.
Right. I think, I think, yeah, I think the inconsistency would be a problem. I think you're right.
What is that number, Bill?
There should be, there should be, from what I'm being, there should be seven cars on the quote. There are six. I should have one because of the K-9 vehicle. I didn't, I did not exclude that. Um, but then I had 19 officers, just in case we have more officers that, you know, we have 12 full-time right now, and as many as we can have part-time, um, it would add up to 19.
I'm sorry, chief. I was asking what the price would be.
Yeah. Could you share those numbers?
I don't have it in front of me right now. I didn't know we were gonna go over body cams, but I think it's like $70,000.
Okay.
For that one. Um, and I think it's like in the 35s or something like that, just for, uh, just for body cams and no cameras in the cars. Uh, but if you wanted the full-blown thing, I think it's around 73. And I was also told that PCCD, uh, gives out half grants, supposedly they were at one point. I don't know if they're still available. And then they would, you know, they would take half of it off of our plate. So I don't know, you know, Andrew may have more on that as far as any kind of grants that are available for paying half of, uh, of this type of price.
Okay. Sounds good.
Just for the record, I'm not so certain that we can get a grant like that, but I understand, but if we can get, I believe.
I'd just like to tack on one more thing. Um, once you guys make the decision to do body worn cameras, you are also going to have to pass a body worn camera policy that's publicly available. It's gonna talk about how training is implemented, how, uh, storage and collection is going to be handled, how the officers are going to be authorized to use it, and in what situations and so forth. It's required by statute, and it's also required by the Pennsylvania Legislature in order for the borough to receive any funding whatsoever from any state program, uh, related to police departments. So you don't need to, you know, obviously, we'll draft that, we'll pass that too before it can be implemented and used.
Okay, that sounds good. I have a couple of them already. Uh, we just wanna go over it with you guys and go over it with, um, the FOP and making sure that we're protecting our guys as well, um, and bringing it to you.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a difference between the policy itself and then the footage and what can happen to the footage. Uh, the footage is protected still by, uh, it's protected by the right to no law, but it's even stronger separate statute. So we're talking about the policy itself versus what actually happens to footage, two separate issues. Um, by reference, my boss and our namesake of our firm, he is the sheriff of Montgomery County. He worked with the state police, and there are recommended models for these, uh, agreements and these policies. So we have everything worked out. We'll just plug and play to the specifics of the bill.
All right, Alex, that sounds good. Um, does anybody else wanna add anything to to this item? All right. We will move on to public health and literacy. Councilwoman Isaac.
Yes. Um, I'd like to thank you for offering to be able to use those chairs for the library to put on their patio. That way, people don't have to sit in their cars, um, while trying to use Wi-Fi. I know Jen will be very happy with that. Um, so thank you again, and we can see what Jen thinks. So thank you again, and we can see what Jen thinks of them and go over a report, like a week of research where we can find cheap ones for them in the future. We can certainly talk about that then. The other thing is their carpets have not been changed in years. They've been cleaned. Is there any way, like, I don't know if I need to have that as a vote at next meeting or this could be discussed here just about replacing them? Or what do they need to do in order to get them replaced?
So it sounds like it's something we would just have to prove an expenditure for. You have to, of course, price it out first. What's everybody's thoughts on that? I haven't been into the library in quite a bit, so I haven't seen them to say, you know, whether I feel that they need to be replaced or not. But I mean, provided that it's, you know, not anything ridiculous, I don't think I would object. Does anybody have any thoughts?
Does the library have a budget separate from recreation? That's my, I mean, Joe, you might be able to answer that for me, not Joe.
Yeah, they do. They have, it's 456 in the budget. And it doesn't, we don't have any library income coming in. We use general fund monies. But the librarian, library aides, maintenance and repairs, their security, as well as their pest company cleans them up. It's all in there. It's not real big, but they also file that each year and then they get money from the state also.
Yes, that is true. I know they do that. The last time I was in the library, as far as the rugs, I think they could be replaced. They look really old. So I can ask Jen to start researching prices. You know, what type of rug she would look at, what type of rug they're looking at, and to get us quotes for that.
If I may make the suggestion. A few years ago, we did a lighting project through the Keystone Library Grant. Fallcroft was one of, two of our municipalities who received that. Might be something to take a look at if you're worried about cost. Does make sense to get some prices. But Keystone Grant was pretty easily obtained. So it might be something that might help out for just your budget.
That's great. Andrew, take that down and we'll look into that. And as the engineer said, I guess proceed with pricing. We'll get those as well. And we'll see what we can come up with at the next meeting. Just make sure this is on the agenda for approval.
Yes, thank you. And I'll ask Jen to get quotes too, and we could discuss that. Message her after this, especially about the patio. Joe, you'll be able to take some stuff over to her tomorrow?
Maybe.
Or somebody will be able to take some stuff over to her.
I'm sure that, Andrew, can you direct?
Department bring some stuff over there, no big deal.
Okay, great, because I work till four. So if you need my help in the, after that would be like 4:30, quarter to 5:00. Just let me know, Andrew.
Got it. And Andrew, if you could just follow up on that Keystone Grant. Lisa, how long does that usually take? That would be whole application approval or that stuff?
To tell you the truth, I did not write it. The librarian wrote the grant.
Oh, wow.
We just implemented the grant. So typically it's run with COVID. I think it was May, but don't quote me on that because it's been a few years. We got one in Fallcroft and we got one and I don't remember the other municipality.
Lisa, I just did, I'm sorry to interject. I just did one for Upper Moreland Township. And I believe the application for this year's deadline was April 30th.
Of course it was.
Yeah. But the cycle is pretty much every nine months. So we could start the process now and have that money in hand by hopefully January.
Sounds good. Alright, moving on to, actually, I'm sorry, do you have anything else?
That's it, I'll just let her know.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to municipal planning and zoning, Councilman Waters.
How you doing? Just one thing, this is for Alex. Alex, is there an economic revalidation commission in effect? Or can we create one?
No, I'm sorry, I don't know if you saw my text message or not last week, Nick, but yes, there is an Economic Revitalization Committee ordinance on the books. You guys have one, you obviously just aren't using it. I can reemail you, and I did see your Fallcroft address, but I can send it to you again, the actual section of the statute that has the committee lays out how many members of businesses have to be on it, when you guys are going to meet and all that fun stuff.
How is that, sorry, so the Economic Revitalization Committee or Commission, do they actually get involved with investment, reinvestment in the, how is it funded? Is it like, or is it just that they just meet and talk about things they'd like to see change? I don't know, what is their function, if I may?
Initially, it looks like it was passed in 2010 or 2012. Don't quote me, I looked at it last week. It was very specific for one section of Fallcroft that wanted to be revitalized. But you can obviously expand the scope of it to include the remainder of Fallcroft Borough for its purposes. The subcommittee, like any others, can do, for example, like an environmental advisory committee, you're going to have it staffed with a couple of council members and a bunch of local business leaders. You're going to come up with plans and suggestions for revitalization projects. They can explore grant possibilities that are out there, private investment for specific projects. And then they wrap everything in the report. They present it to the council and you as a council discuss and decide if you guys want to move forward with any of those projects. Now you're going to fund them.
Okay, very good. Sorry, Nick, go ahead.
No, no, it was pretty much the same thing you answered, pretty much what I needed to know. I guess it works very well with Kyle and the place next to the Lemoine Farm, right?
Right, the Giles Cannon property, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that would be certainly something that I would consider part of a revitalization.
Specifically, if, I don't know that structure of this commission, how it was worded in the ordinance. Do we have to match that exactly? Or do we wish to change the composition of it? What would need to happen for that?
Because it's embodied in an ordinance, if you wanted to change the subject matter to broaden it or just to change the makeup and structure, you would just need a simple ordinance amendment. So, you know, just change the portions of the ordinance that are in place that you want to change, advertise it one time, pass it at a public meeting.
Alright, very good. Alright, anything else, Councilman Waters?
No, that's it, thank you.
Alright, very good, thank you. Moving on to Parks and Recreation Councilwoman Daly.
I'm just letting you guys know, our arts and crafts program has been a huge hit, probably more than anticipated. First, we made 50 bags the first week. An additional 30 bags have been made. This week, we made 96 bags. And Andrew can attest to the fact that there are not many left. So it has been a huge hit. I'm really excited about that. Lot, a lot of positive feedback back for families and kids having a great time. So the arts and crafts program is doing fantastic. Fourth of July was a good hit. We learned some things. We had some hits, some misses. The best decorated house was a huge hit. Really, really got into that. So the committee is thinking that's something we'll do again for future holidays, whether we're in lockdown or not in lockdown. People really got behind it and really had a good time with it. Like I said, some hits and misses. We got to figure some stuff out. Fourth of July is not apparently a huge holiday that people were willing to come up and hang out and participate in some activities. For the most part, it was well-received and I think the community had a good time with it. Last thing is Community Day. I really need some guidance as to where council wants my committee to focus its energy. Like I said, I think businesses that usually donate are probably not necessarily in a position to donate. And knowing that numbers are increasing, I feel like maybe we should be planning for worst-case scenario as far as not being able to gather as a community, not to mention the fact that the normal location will be under construction, like Jason said. I have asked the committee to start looking at alternative ideas, like the food truckathon, maybe a map of local businesses in Fallcroft who are willing to do Fallcroft Day specials, moving people around the borough, maybe having an event at the firehouse, an event at the Borough Hall, event at Montgomery Park, something for the people to do, come and see little by little and not so much all in one location. So we're brainstorming, but if you guys have any input, I really would appreciate it. Like I said, I don't think Community Day is going to be able to look like past Community Days. And so we still want to make it about Fallcroft and about the community being part of itself and, you know, being Fallcroft. So if anybody has any ideas or any input, I really would appreciate it.
Just one idea, Lee, is there any Garth Brooks fans on the line? What he just decided to do?
Yes, there is.
So what Garth decided to do, because there's an inability to have concerts, was all over the country, he turned parking lots into drive-ins. And he had a concert that, you know, they had a screen and all. It was a televised concert. It's possible to take a parking lot and turn it into something with maybe even a stage and live music because it's just local and maybe do it that way, where it's a drive-in Community Day. Doesn't that, like, everything you just said, Lee, is all activities leading up to maybe your finale at the end of the night, would be people coming to this drive-in so that they're safely in their cars but they can enjoy some music and all that kind of stuff? Because, I mean, it seemed like, you know, we brought out the Soul Cruisers the last couple of years. They started to gain some speed because they really are very good. And people started to come out and see them. I wonder if just booking a band at the end of the night for that could work? Just an idea, I'm not married to it. It's just something I came up with listening to your talk.
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely interested in those kind of ideas. And if that's something that's had interest in past years and people were really getting into it, then I think it's definitely something we can look into doing. We had spoken about doing a drive-in movie at Borough Hall and using that field as the drive-in field. So definitely, we're on the same kind of wavelength. And I don't think it would be a bad idea to maybe set up a stage and have a band and have people be able to picnic with their families or whatever. So I'll definitely bring that back to the committee.
Sounds like a great idea.
That, just so you know, Lee, I actually got a message, a Facebook message from Julia Ford while we were in this meeting. I haven't even had a chance to read it, but I believe we have settled on August 1st or possibly August 2nd for Drive-In Movie Day. So those are the dates that were made available to us. We didn't choose them, but I believe that it confirmed during this meeting. I actually, I haven't had a chance to check.
Yeah, I just was thinking like we could do it again in September if we need it, if we need it to as a borough. Screen rentals and projector rentals are not expensive. So if we want to do that as a grand finale for our Borough Meeting, our Community Day, it would be totally feasible. But moon bounces and face painting and all that fun stuff that usually happens, I'm not so sure about. I don't know that it would be feasible with the restrictions currently that we're in or could possibly be in worse. So I'll take your idea, Jason, I like it. And we'll keep coming up with ideas as we get ideas and start to firm them up. I'll bring them back to you guys and let you know where we're at.
Sounds good.
Alright, Councilwoman Daly, is that everything you got for us?
Yeah, that's it. That was a lot for me.
I know, I wanted to say that you're doing a really good job trying to get around the circumstances of COVID-19. You've done a really good job of working around that, so.
Yeah, I'm very thankful to have Jenna Willis has been super helpful with her super craft ideas. She's been amazing. The rest of the committee has been super helpful. It's been going pretty well considering.
I would say.
Trying to work on the Fallcroft, so.
Good job, good job, thank you. Alright, so moving on to Municipal Legislation Councilman McGuigan.
So I have, this says here, decriminalizing marijuana and ticketing vehicles with expired registration and inspections. I'm imagining they're two separate issues, right?
Yes, so they were issues that I think were, so the vehicle expiration, registration, inspection, ticketing thing, that was drafted up and I think we approved on it only to find that the Daily Times did not run the advertisement that we paid for. So because even whether we paid for it or not, I don't know if they credited us. I don't know how it worked out. The long and short of it is, because it didn't air or wasn't published within accordance with the law, the vote that we took on that measure is null. So we have to start at the drawing board and then COVID hit. So that, you know, we're starting to see a lot of the stuff repeat on us that we have to, you know, get back to that was interrupted by a lot of the outside of the COVID stuff. The decriminalization of the marijuana ordinance, I think we had to work some details out with the police department regarding what they were comfortable with. I believe if memory serves me correctly, that we were going to do $100 fine and that those revenues would be split half-half with the police department for people who were caught. So in other words, instead of, you know, going to court, you're basically going to get like a code violation or a ticket instead of ending up in the criminal justice system. But the chief and anybody else who took part in that, does that help, Jason?
Yeah, I know other comments on that. I think we were all pretty much on the same page on that stuff. But that's good to know that some other people are weighing in.
Yeah, you're absolutely right on the parking ordinance. We just have to re-advertise it in order to pass it properly. And you're right about the marijuana ordinance. We had kind of worked through all the issues. The last one was the fine and the splitting of the revenue. That was adjusted. We just never, after COVID hit, we never had the chance to re-advertise it and vote to pass it at a public meeting. This all went down like two weeks before COVID.
Yeah, yeah, I remember. Alright.
Discuss the repeal of the disorderly houses ordinance?
So I'll take that one. So essentially, we had a summary citation enforcement action be brought to our attention last month. Rebecca Geiser from my office, who is a former district attorney in Delaware County, was handling the matter. When she dug into your ordinances, she realized that the violation was cited for disorderly houses. The issue here is that a disorderly house ordinance, such as the one that Fallcroft has on the books, has been ruled expressly unconstitutional by the United States Supreme Court in the form. This is also challenged. What did you say?
What do they know?
Right, right. So Norristown had a almost identical version of this ordinance on the books as well. And it was also challenged on different constitutional grounds five years ago. The Eastern District cited the Supreme Court and also ruled that that wrinkle in the disorderly houses ordinance was also unconstitutional too. So Norristown was ordered to pay $500,000 plus in attorney's fees and had repealed the ordinance immediately. So as soon as we saw the summary citation and what it was citing to, and we realized immediately that your ordinance is unconstitutional, we discontinued the case. We got the approval from Andrew to do that. And we also, of course, strongly recommend that your next meeting, you formally vote to repeal that ordinance.
Alright. Good to go on, Joe?
Yes, sir.
So Joe, hold on, Joe. So Alex, what do we suggest when we have a pan-ass house? That there's a problem? We tell them we can't do anything about it because it's unconstitutional?
No, I mean, you can continue to arrest. You can continue to cite for the individual violations, but you can't revoke the landlord's right to operate the property or you can't take title away from a property owner for a continuing nuisance.
Okay. So wait, after the repeal of this, we won't be able to withhold UNO? Or like, so if we have a tenant who is a consistent nuisance, there's nothing we can do? Is that like?
Joe, my understanding is we're about a year away from not being able to do the UNOs.
What do you mean?
That the state is going to outlaw us. They will.
That the state is going to outlaw us. They will, they will not give us the ability anymore to go in on a yearly basis and do UNO rental inspections.
Is that going to be Commonwealth-wide, every municipality will be?
It's my understanding.
There's proposed legislation, of course, uh, by the real estate agency lobby, uh, they're pushing for this. Uh, because it became a huge issue, obviously, during the current times that burrows and municipalities were refusing to do UNO inspections. But nothing set in stone, of course, but there is proposed legislation before the state for this.
Okay.
But irregardless, uh, with the disorderly house, right, we couldn't pull the UNO. We couldn't demand that the property be sold. We couldn't also then foreclose on the property because there's a lien on it. You know, any of those methods underneath the ordinance just can't be enforced. You just have to continually enforce the, uh, repeating action. That's all you can do at this point.
All right. All right. Uh, so yeah, yeah, I think you have one more item, Councilman McGuigan.
Yeah, so, you know, look, listen, not to be the, um, what I want to call the curmudgeon in the group. I, I thought of this and I put it on Facebook and I think it's actually a, a good idea to, um, put resources towards things other than law enforcement due to the fact that we get a lot of calls that are not necessarily law enforcement related. And these calls could be handled by social workers that could be better equipped via training to deal with people with mental disorders. Now, I know that police are trained in this, um, but usually a social worker has, you know, a, a much larger, resume as it relates to mental health and mental health is a growing issue. Here, here's my only thing that I'll say about it. I think that as I listen to the different ideas and different things that council wants to do, um, I, I just don't know that this is feasible at this time. I mean, uh, almost to the point where I would recommend that all of these ideas be kicked, that we've brought up even just tonight, be kicked to the finance and admin committee to kind of take a look at. Because this is up doing the numbers in my head and obviously they're rough numbers. I mean, we have a four-point-six million dollar budget. Three-point-one million goes to law enforcement, which leaves us about a pie of about one-point-five million. Now, I did a little research while we're on the, while we're in the meeting here. And a low-end public works director makes around seventy-five thousand dollars a year with benefits. I mean, so you're, you're cutting in that budget pretty quickly. We've added staffing to the finance. We've added staffing to administrative. Um, we've come up with some, some different plans. Body cams was brought up tonight, which is another, you know, it may be a one-time big cost of seventy thousand, but we have a lot of projects, I think, that we're taking on and I think all of them are worth it. But at some point, I think we're going to have to start discussing, like, we do not have an endless stream of money. And, um, I'll be the first to sacrifice my idea to say that even though it may be a good idea, I don't know if it's feasible right now. Thoughts?
I know, I think that that, that, that those are fair assessments. I mean, we, you don't want to get caught up when you have too many balls in the air financially and too many debts to service. And then that cuts into your discretionary spending abilities. And then, so I will certainly take that under advisement. It, it should be something that Joe and I should talk about. Uh, Joe, if you're still on the call, which I hope you are. Uh, we should sit down and, and talk about some feasibility matters. Some of them, as they pertain to the, the public works, uh, situation. Um, and I, you know, I'd be happy to talk about that, um, just to let us know what sort of leeway we have. Now, the driveway situation, we've created a revenue stream in order to take care of that. So and, and the plan is that that pays for itself. So that's, that's one expense that I don't, I don't worry about so much. But, yeah, if you get into having a social worker, that's thirty-five, forty thousand dollars. Maybe less than that part-time, then you've got seventy-seven thousand dollars for the, the, you make a fair point. Uh, Mindy, are you asking for a word?
Yes. Um, I was reading when Jason had posted that. And, um, I kind of agree with that. I think that it may help. Um, I don't know how we feasibly can do it. I also do know that there is a, um, mobile crisis team that does go out throughout Delaware County to people who have mental health issues. Um, however, sometimes it could take forever. So at some point, if it is feasible, I think in our borough, it would be good to have. I think it would help to even defuse the situation. I'm, work in the mental health field. So I've come and I've been in the mental health field for eighteen years. Almost nineteen years next year. So I've come and I've seen a lot. I think it may, instead of the police being called right away, I do think the mental health person should have a police backup because we don't know what we're walking into. But that way we can help, maybe try to defuse the situation prior to anything going on. I do think it's a good idea.
Mindy, is, if folks in your community, is this something that they would be comfortable with doing? Or, I mean, I don't know if you've talked to anybody about it since, since the Facebook post, but is it something that they would feel okay with, with having the proper police backup? Because I agree with what you said. I think a lot of, a lot of times when people end up with criminal records, they could have been better served by having someone point them in the right direction of help and whatever that help may be, because it's different every time. But would they be, would they feel comfortable doing so?
Honestly, I haven't brought it up to that, um, into, in that way, Jason. But I could try and talk to some people within my own work as a conversation, like, what would they think about that? Um, would that be something that they think that they would, themselves would feel comfortable with?
I just wondered too, how long would it take me in your field? Uh, you know, like you said, you know, it's like thirty, forty thousand dollars. I would be on the job for about fifteen minutes until I said, well, wait a minute. How come I'm not getting paid with law enforcement? That, and I imagine that would happen. So thirty, I think thirty, forty thousand is, is a pretty, it, mental, people who work in mental health are not properly compensated.
I have to agree with that, that I think we aren't compensated for what we do as much as we should. Um, it's just something I think more to talk about and to see how we can come across this.
Cool.
Yeah, I agree. I get what you're saying, Jason, but I don't know that we should take it completely off the table. Um, maybe Chief Bear, you could look into, um, how your police would feel about it. I know that, um, you know, I specifically had to call Danny White the one day because I had somebody who was in mental crisis and asked him for advice. And unfortunately, at that point, there was nothing that could be done until this person acted criminally. So I, I, I feel like, and, and I knew it was a mental health issue. Danny White was clear that it was a mental health issue, but there's not a lot of help. Not, there's not a lot of mechanisms out there to help in that situation. So I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I would like to know how many times the police are called where they feel like a social worker would have been a better choice. Like, I would like to, I would like to hear from the police if that's something that we maybe need equally to some of these other things we're talking about.
Chief, can you weigh in on that at all?
I don't know where we're getting to. I don't know. I'm just, my head's spinning. So alls I could tell you is we answer calls. I don't wait for a social worker to come there and do anything. I handle the call. Unfortunately, the way the laws are, there's nothing we can really do until somebody breaks the law. However, do we do, have we called the mobile crisis team? Absolutely, we've called the mobile crisis team. However, during COVID, they said they weren't coming out. So that's off the table. Um, so now they're starting to come out, but it can take some time, as Mindy said. It can take some time for them to get there. Now, when they get there, they may have and, and be able to put somebody into the crisis center. However, the problem that we do have when we try to take someone to the crisis center, we don't get much help because by the time I'm done doing the paperwork, that person's out. So there, there's, there's, there's not a connection with what the police tell the crisis sender, center. They go upon whatever the person that's in, going into the crisis center tells them. So like, we had a person come out of crisis, then go back a day later and write a three-oh-two commitment on his mother, who was not completely sane, but way better than he is. And we had, we had to take her and put her into crisis center, which was kind of crazy, but that's where we got stuck. But as far as, um, social workers answering calls, no way, absolutely not.
I, uh, I would be inclined to, to agree. I mean, I think that with the chief, I mean, I would think that the, so the issue with, with that, I, I would think would come more into, into sentencing. So in other words, I, I would feel better if a cop is there to assess the situation. I don't know if a social worker, if we want a social worker walking into a situation that's unpredictable without the proper physical and law enforcement training to handle a situation that could get ugly. I mean, those situations can be volatile. And so, I mean, I don't know how many crimes are responsible or, or perpetuated by mental illness. But I think maybe on that end, on the end of sentencing or on the end of, of their, their court date. I mean, you know, I, I don't know if maybe that's an option. But Chief, how, how often is, is a situation, is there something, a situation that you are, are met with that could be referred to a social worker right away? How often does that happen? Is it justified? Does it happen often enough for us to justify a, an expense like this? Is it, what could you tell me about that?
I, I don't, I can't tell you anything about that. I don't know if it justifies it or not. I know, um, like I said, the county has their, that crisis team, um, that you can refer to at certain points. But I just don't know. I mean, we have a lot of, you know, issues with certain things that we have to handle. And when we get called, it's people that are in trouble and they don't feel right. Something's not right. Um, I just don't, I don't know if you have, or if the money goes to saying, well, this doesn't feel right. I think this person is talking to me a little funny. I think I need a social worker to come here. I just think that's way too, you're risking way too much. Instead of having an officer go there, um, assess the situation and then call for some kind of assistance or whatever else that we can use, um, to help that person if it need be.
That's advice well taken. All right. Uh, I think it's something we can keep on the table, talk, talk about more, research more. But, uh, you know, I'm going to-
Or maybe we can push the county to know that, that this, this, something needs to change within the county. That if we already have a crisis center, that it's not working for our police and for our community. So maybe it's something we need to push a little further up the line as opposed to taking it on our shoulders ourselves.
Right.
But it's not, it's not a bad idea to, to, to try to get that change to happen.
No, I, I, I-
Yeah.
I don't think this is a bad, I don't think this is a bad idea, but in the grand scheme of things, I just think it needs to be polished up a lot. And you got to have the finances behind it to do it. And as doing it in a small borough, I think it's not feasible to have a social worker on the books for the amount of calls that you're doing unless you have the backing of the county and the county's doing it. And there may be the regionalizing it, like putting it, okay, this social worker's here and they're going to work, uh, Fallcroft, Sharon Hill, Darby Township, um, in Collingdale. And that's what their job is. And then you have another one doing another, like three or four towns that the county can do. Instead of one for each town, I think that would be a lot, uh, too much money to, uh, to put out in the very beginning of this whole piece.
Yeah, I can, I agree with you, Chief Bear. I hear what you're saying and I agree with you. I'm not saying that you think it's a bad idea. I think what you're saying is that it's probably not the best idea for just Fallcroft. That I, I mean, I think what you're saying is probably more ideal that we should push to Delaware County for them to push for it to be, uh, more beneficial to the small towns that need it.
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I, I'm not saying that it's a bad idea per se, but sending a social worker out on a hot call just because somebody didn't like what they were saying, I think is a bad idea. I think after the officer gets there, then he can radio and say, listen, I need the social worker on duty to be here to take care of this. Then I think it's, I think it helps protect everybody. But in the very beginning stages, you don't know what you're going to get yourself into.
No, I think, I think who guys make an initial contact makes, I mean, that's, that's, I don't think anyone could argue the other way, Chief.
Yeah. I mean, I think we had it with, I think, um, with, uh, the UNOs. It's come to the point where sometimes, uh, I, I forget his name, but what he was doing to UNOs, he would say like, they felt uneasy and we, we would show up just to be a face. You know, at certain points. I mean, we, we've done that as well. But I just think to have that initial contact and then maybe if, if the county can help us with certain phases of this and saying, listen, you know, where they, you know, they can do three towns. Whatever this, this social worker does, if they can work all three towns and they can work it out, that would be great. Because it'll be a little bit faster response time.
Well, maybe we could call Sharon Hill or Wood or, or however, and maybe they'd be interested. You never know.
I have no problem. I, if you want me to, I could reach out to Sharon Hill.
No, I, I think, again, I, again, I'm going to, I'm going to fall back to my original thing that, I mean, we have to financially see if we can even afford to do this. Because we have so many ideas that sometimes some of them got to hit the cutting room floor, you know?
Yep. Yeah, I agree. Um.
Well, maybe we bring it up to the county and they can take care of it.
That's what I was going to say. I mean, if, if we could improve the response time of the existing system, that's, that's, that's the win-win because it doesn't, it doesn't affect our budget in any way. But it becomes a resource that we're now adding to, you know, to the menu of options that we have for people. And it doesn't cost us anything. I think maybe that we make a push for the, through the county to, go ahead, Mindy, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I think that we definitely need to get the county on board. Because not only is the county, we also need to get the crisis units on board. Because there's times we can three-oh-two people and the county will deny the three-oh-two. Or the, once they are three-oh-tuned, the crisis center won't keep them longer than, say, twenty-four hours sometimes. I mean, I see that in the residential site I work at, where some of them just need to be there longer than what they have. So I think this is not only just a Fallcroft issue, it's a general county-wide issue. I think really with the response times and all that kind of stuff.
So I think that might have a lot to do with, with the laws around three-oh-two, which I don't fully understand. So if-
And Mindy?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Chief.
No, I'm sorry. I'm over talking. I just want to let Mindy know that he's right on, he's, he's right on point with that whole thing. And also a lot of times with these, um, crisis centers, they say it's not a mental problem, it's a drug problem. And then we're kind of like, we're, we're holding the bag, like, we can't do anything because they don't have the drugs on them. But they're saying, and we know there, there's something wrong three-oh-two-wise, but they won't mix, they won't mix those. But soon as they find out that they're on drugs, they spit them right back out.
So, I mean, I mean, a drug problem is a mental problem in, in, you know, a very real sense. So that's just, I mean, it's outside of my wheelhouse, but I think that stinks. Really. But, uh, that, again, that's, that's not something that we have the power to legislate over. But I do think maybe we could mention something to the county to see what they could do to improve the response time with their unit. So Mindy, if you want to maybe look into that.
Where, if I could have some direction on where to start, I would be more than happy to kind of work on that, see what can be done.
I would say probably county council. Am I right?
I would think so.
Right.
I think you're right. Yeah, county council would be the first start about, um, some, um, support for, um, crisis, crisis intervention with, um, at certain times and response.
Okay, Andrew, if you could do me a favor and text me information on who I could talk to, who's in, um, on county council. Um, and give me their information so I can like send an emails or tech phone numbers to text them if I get a chance to coordinate a time to actually talk.
They actually have open now office hours, Mindy, that are posted on the website, on the county website.
Yeah, they, they do. Actually, there's a council person on duty, I think, every, every weekday. Is that right?
I, I honestly, I honestly don't know. I, I just usually text Monica or Elaine. Um, I, I think, Mindy, I think that you should meet with council, uh, county councilwoman Christine Ruther. I, I think this is some, I have a feeling this is something you should be interested, uh, i- in looking into. Um, I'd be glad to tomorrow morning set up a meeting between you two, maybe an email chain or something like that.
Email exchange would be, I know that I am also off the last week in July from my full-time job. So if we can't get it like after four, like if, like about 4:30 or so, um, that might be a good week for us to actually meet during the day. Uh, emailing is gotta be the best way to kind of cor- correspond back and forth.
So I think what we'll do is we'll just put that all into an email. Right now, I'm not gonna be able to go through all that. We could talk about it a couple of times, but let's do that by email.
Okay, sounds good. Just let me know. Keep me posted. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. All right. So moving on to the new construction committee, Councilman McWigan, you got anything for us?
Well, I guess I'll move on. I was gonna try to solve global warming under legislative, but I'll move on for now. Um.
This was your idea, but.
I know, I know. And I'm sorry, Mindy, I'm sorry somehow that got you work. I, my apologies.
She's helping that and literacy.
Not a problem, Jason. Not a problem. It'll be interesting to see what we can do for this.
Yeah, yeah, it could be. Listen, it could change things for the better. That's the important.
Yes.
Um, but under uh, the new building construction, uh, we finished up. And when I say we, I believe Joe met with the Republic Bank and they have the terms of the loan. Um, I just forwarded today, I doubt he's had a chance to look at it much, to Alex. I don't think there's anything glaring to him, but uh, we have what would, I believe would be the terms for the loan. Um, then we're just working through um, the approval from the county for the site. And at that point, we should be ready to go. It should be, everything should be uh, good.
All right, very good. I, I think whether, did we hit some snags a couple of weeks ago or about a week and a half ago that were brought to my attention? Have they been worked out?
From what I understand, they uh, the, the time went from a 30-day review process down to a 10-day review process.
I'd answer that question. Um, this is, this is a county conservation district approval for the MPDES. Um, we're in day 22 of a, a 25-day cycle. Um, they are not going to do a 10-day review that's considered an emergency review because of the timeline. They should have, have comments if they have comments for the permit by next week. However, if there are comments, they will do an emergency review process. That emergency review process requires that we give them a $1,202, I believe it is. Um, fee for doing a quick turnaround uh, review. This is for stormwater off of a construction site. And it is a DEP permit. It is not a county permit. It is a DEP permit. So that's where we are right now. It didn't make sense for them to go into a 10-day. We got an email this afternoon from, from the county conservation district. They will do a, a 10-day emergency review. They've agreed to that, should there be any comments.
Do we expect comments?
I have no idea.
Okay. What, when you said, see, I'm, I'm not familiar with what, and what does it, what is a comment? When you said, if we have comments, is that something that, uh, explain that to me if you could.
It, it might be an engineering design comment. It might be a, a scope. Because you would actually have to identify the various um, levels of the scope of work, what needs to be done and when, how it's to be done. Post-construction uh, instructions that are part of, of the design plans that were completed. Uh, restoration, it could, it could be, for example, we could get a letter that says um, it's adequate with these specific items changed. Maybe it's a rate of, of restoration proceeding. It could be that we need to add a section of, of filter sock or something else that maybe uh, they feel that, that the design length that we utilize was not, was not what should be done. Um, it's, it's pretty fair. If you see something that he feels can be fixed very quickly, they'll take that into consideration and send, just send something saying that it's approved conditionally on X, Y, Z being completed. So at this point, I don't know what, uh, what comments could be made.
Okay.
Unfortunately, part of the issue here is that with COVID, instead of the applications being sent to the conservation district, they were being sent to the county government center. So if you sent it on a Monday, they were being picked up on Friday and then got get taken to the county conservation district. So COVID has really caused an issue with, with getting all of this uh, in line as we would have expected it to get in line.
Okay. All right, thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that. Um, anything else, Councilman McWigan? Jason?
Uh, he did your advice and muted. My bad. Uh, no, that's it.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, so um, moving on to the solicitor's report.
I'll report independent of all the things uh, that we discussed already today.
All right, very good. Uh, finance director's report?
Joe, uh, council president, we'll have your report ready for, for, for um, Friday, for my Tuesdays, next week's Tuesday's meeting. And I get Jason's.
I lost you there, Joe, at the end. Joe? Did we lose him? Did anybody catch the last part of what he said? Was he, was he done?
Sorry, he was about to say something positive about me, but I'm not sure.
He's still with us. All right, looks like we lost them. I will go to the borough manager's report.
Did you hear me?
I can.
So I, uh, the, I, something is wrong with my mouse. Steve, uh, if you are listening to me, I can't move it. Um, I don't know what's going on here, but, um, so I didn't know if I was off mute or not and I can't see the screen because I have the uh, meeting minutes up, pick them as we go. Um, the only thing I wanted to speak about um, was uh, just talking about the general process for how we uh, are doing with, well, I don't know, some of that should be, it's, it's covered, discussed in our executive session, so um, I won't go into that. But uh, yeah, um, we have obtained, from the county, we've been connected with the Urban League of Philadelphia. They have, they are providing meal kits to our residents. Every Wednesday and every Friday, they get delivered at 8:30 in the morning on Wednesdays and they get delivered at 9:35 in the morning on Fridays. Starting tomorrow, we did a robocall today and we're doing a robocall tomorrow morning that's gonna go out to remind people, we've already got seven people who've reserved meals. Um, hopefully be able to give enough of it away. The county is flexible, so if we ultimately find that there's just not interest in these meals or actually their meal kits, uh, we can, we can always drop. Um, we can always lower the number that we receive. Uh, if we get an increase in demand and there are a ton of people who are really interested, uh, then we can increase it. So um, I reached out to local, local organizations. I, I think it's called Grand Standing Up. I forgive me. Uh, some of you may know the woman who, who runs it and um, trying to make those connections. Also, we're setting up an email blast. It'll go out tomorrow. We're gonna have uh, I, I ideally, I think, monthly emails. It'll go to an email list that we can increase uh, over time. And then um, just to let people know about upcoming events, previous events, council meetings and any other evident, any other uh, things that come up, I think that'd be a helpful way to advertise what we're doing in the borough. Uh, besides that, that, nothing else.
All right, very good. Uh, thank you, Andrew. Any old business? Any new business? Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Hey Joe, I got something on rural business.
Okay.
We were, we were talking finances earlier. We lucked out last winter, but winter's coming fast. And we're gonna have a new director, maybe. And he's gonna say, okay, highway, load the trucks up with salt. We got forecast for 12 inches of snow. And we got nothing to load it up with. We can't forget about that backloader.
That's correct. Uh, Andrew, can you, and can you get to work with, with Alex on drawing up whatever's gotta be drawn up in order to, to, to make this work? Um, for the, I guess, the backloader. Um, I think it said Tony in Emirato?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so can you, can you get on that this week? Andrew?
Absolutely.
Mayor, thank you for reminding me with COVID and just the chaos. It actually.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but winter, you know it.
Right, we're gonna need to be, you know, have, have our ducks in a row for that. Um. Thank you. I appreciate that.
No problem.
So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Who was the second?
I, second.
Kyle, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Everybody have a good night. That was a long meeting and I apologize. Have a good one.
Good night.
Night, guys.
Night.